I'd like to call this meeting to order and I would like to announce at this time that this meeting is being recorded and ask if there's anyone in the audience who is also recording this meeting. Hearing none, if we could rise to the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the very goal of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item is public comment and we have Mr. Michael Robidoux.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here just tonight just to stress the importance of keeping Mr. Natoli and Mr. Page on the zoning Board of Appeals. They've got a lot of knowledge, they've been there for a while, just like Ann Weston, Mr. Brooks, and everyone else, but they got more knowledge. For you guys to take them off that board would be the biggest mistake Auburn's made. They have more knowledge than any...I watched the meeting last week, the last meeting, and I seen the people come before you. They don't know nothing. "They're gonna learn," they said. That's not good. They wouldn't give me that opportunity. Why should they give them an opportunity? I just think and I feel that you guys are making a great mistake by replacing Mr. Natoli and Mr. Page. Thank you.
Yep, take that, please. The next item we have is communications and in your packet you'll find a letter from the Chairman of the Waram Board of Selectmen regarding Chapter 40b Housing. So I put it on the agenda as a correspondence. I don't know if members had the opportunity to read the letter. We can certainly put it on the agenda for a future meeting if you want to take action on this, but it's a complicated issue and there's so much more than just designating mobile home parks as low-income. I mean, there are other, many other units in town that would definitely be considered low-income. We have many, many low-cost condominiums that are actually less than some of the mobile homes, so I'm not sure about designating just mobile homes. So depending on how board members feel...did you want to comment on this? I know you've done some research as well. Or do you want to wait until we put it on the agenda?
Yeah, through the Chair. I am not familiar with this specific bill, but I do know, as I mentioned to the Chair, that we have been asked in the past by certain residents in town to look into whether we could consider mobile homes as low-income for purposes of counting our affordable housing percentage. And I have spoken to the Senator as well as the State Representative about that, so I think, I think we should look at this bill and see if it accomplishes what we've been asked to look at, or if there's anything in here that might be of concern to the Board. But it is certainly an issue in general that we want to look at. You know, right now, the argument has been made by several residents and others in town that those who live in mobile homes who are income-eligible should be allowed to be qualified as low-income for housing purposes, and right now, it does, it's not allowed. So there probably should be some vehicle for doing that. I'm just not familiar with this specific piece of legislation.
Okay. Mr. Simoni?
Didn't we just have something recently from the State Legislature above this very subject?
Through the Chair. I'm not sure there...in the past, there have been other bills that have been filed, I believe, including bills that were at least, if not filed but signed largely or cosponsored from our local delegation, but I'm not sure what the most recent ones are. I believe every year, there is something that is filed by some legislator in the form of the mass because it's been an ongoing problem. I don't know if there's other legislation, Mr. Simoni, in addition to this. There may be.
So is there any interest?
Through the Chair, you know, I know, I'm sorry.
I know, I don't like this one.
Has an echo, so I'll back up. Through the Chair, I'm happy to look into this and talk to our legislators and see if there are any other bills that are pending related to this topic as well, and then we can have a better idea of which ones may address the issue that we're trying to accomplish.
So what we can do is send the Chairman of the Town of Waram just a quick letter, letting him know that we received his correspondence, we're going to put it on a future agenda, and we'll let him know at that time what position the town has taken, if the Board is agreeable to that.
That'd be great.
Okay, great. So that's what we'll do. We'll put it on a future agenda and we'll also send a letter to the Chairman of the Town of Waram that we received his correspondence and that we are going to take action at a future meeting. Anything else on that? Okay, we have Board of Selectmen items, we have, under General Items, we have Appointments. The first we have is the Finance Committee. In your packet you'll find that we had one request for appointment to the Finance Committee, and it's actually a current member who, who has been serving. There have been no other applications.
I make a motion, we appoint Ann Kavanaugh to the Finance Committee.
Is there any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so vote in. Next, we have Zoning Board of Appeals. In your packet you have, and we did interview five candidates, we have Mr. Dennis Natoli, who's the current Chairman, Mr. Wayne Page, who is a full member on the Board, Megan E. Roach, who interviewed with the Board, Mr. J. Lawrence Chacolo, who interviewed with the Board, and Mr. Jeffrey Murray, who also interviewed with the Board.
Chair.
Mr. Grossman, then Mr. Simoni.
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Lawrence Chacolo.
Second.
ZBIA.
So we have a motion to appoint Mr. J. Lawrence Chacolo to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and it's been seconded. Is there any discussion on this first one? Mr. Simoni?
Yeah, um, I just want to say that while I thought he was a fairly good candidate, I don't think he had the experience that I was looking for on the zoning Board, especially given the fact that we recently lost a couple of our longstanding members of the Planning Board as well. I think it's paramount that we keep the experience we have, so I can't support this appointment.
So I just, just want to be sure that you just misspoke. We lost a couple of members, longstanding members of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Right. So given that, I think it's imperative that we keep the experience we have.
Well, you said Planning Board.
Exactly. We've lost a lot of experience recently, and I think that, given that it's paramount that we keep the experience we have on the zoning Board, given the inexperience of some of the other Boards, or what we've lost on some of the other Boards.
Mr. Holstrom?
I think, in response to that, I think it's very important that we have volunteers come forward, will be willing to serve on these Boards, and I don't feel as though, Mr. Simoni, that there's not enough information or enough experience there with Mr. Chacolo that I would support him there. He has come forward, he's volunteered his time, and I think it was time to give somebody else an opportunity to serve on the Boards and see where we go with that.
Mr. Simoni?
Yeah, um, well, I think, in fairness, at our, at our last meeting, when we did the interviews, prior to that, we had given the opportunity to, any, oh, any comment. I mean, this is a Board of Selectmen appointment, but we do, you know, anyone can comment, as we've seen in the past, regarding advice, their thoughts, feelings, and we had a business owner resident, Mr. Wade, and I spoke to that and addressed that with Mr. Natoli. So I think that, in fairness to the candidates, while there's nothing wrong with anyone giving their thoughts or opinion on this, I do think that they should know that the Town Manager had indicated to me that she didn't feel, she was not in favor of Mr. Natoli and Mr. Page staying on the ZBIA. Now, I think that if that same conversation was had with other members of the Board, that should at least be brought up, because I think that everyone, again, in fairness to any, any input that was given, it should be brought out here. So, and I have to say, given your comments, the one thing that does bother me is the very pointed and tough questions that you asked of both Mr. Page and Mr. Natoli, and yet had none. No questions for three people you knew nothing about.
Excuse me, Mr.?
Enough. It just seems like, you know, maybe equal weight wasn't given to all the candidates. That's to be determined, but that's just my, I think it's fair that everyone know who had input on the process.
So, so, so let me just say that I'm not going to allow yelling from the audience. This is your first and last warning. If there's any more yelling from the audience, I will ask that you be removed. We just don't, we just don't do that. So, Mr. Simoni, and I just want to comment on your statement you just made, just, you know, since you put it out there. I will be very, very clear. The Town Manager never, never told me that she did not want Mr. Page and Mr. Natoli reappointed. So I want that on the record, if anything comes of this. And while, while I have the microphone, I'll just say I did have some concerns with completely replacing all members, and I, I've watched those meetings for a long time. I know that you need the experience, and it really has been a struggle to, to say, well, do you keep one member on? Do you take, keep two members on? Do you replace them both? And to be quite honest, I have no idea where any of this Board was going, coming into this, because no one, no one said anything. So to make a statement that the Town Manager has discussed with members...
I never said that. I said it was discussed with me.
And, and you all, you made a statement further that you wanted to be sure that no, no other members approached.
And I will add, I will, I will also add, because it was, it was input that was given on this very subject, in April, after one of the Selectmen meetings, Mr. Grossman mentioned to me outside that Mr. Natoli and Mr. Page would be up for reappointment this year. And I said, okay, and he told me that he was not in favor of them staying on the Board either. And I told him, I told him that not knowing who was going to be applying for this position, it would be impossible for me to make any kind of decision in April. His final comment to me was, it's probably not going to matter, because you probably won't be here when those appointments come up.
So, I don't want to get into these back and forths of he said, she said, but if Mr. Grossman did make such a comment to you alone, then that's certainly not a violation of open will.
No, it isn't.
So I am going to ask, the Town Manager has asked for an opportunity to respond.
I'm just saying, it's...
Mr. Simoni, and, the Town Manager has asked for an opportunity to respond.
Okay, but I wasn't done, and I was interrupted.
Mr. Simoni, and I've just... No, you weren't interrupted.
I was interrupted.
Mrs. Jacobson?
Through the Chair, I just want to clarify. I've had no conversations regarding these appointments this year with Mr. Simoni. Last year, when the appointment process came up, it was last May, and I did have a conversation with Mr. Simoni, and I will say it publicly, and anyone who asked me, I would have said it, but I have not had that opportunity. I personally don't have any, first of all, I don't have any say in this matter, it's not my appointment, my appointment is not the ZBIA, but I will say, when I've been asked about prior ZBIA appointments, which is the context which I had the conversation with Mr. Simoni a year ago, I have received complaints, and I will publicly say I've received the complaints, about the ZBIA. I've said that in the past, and I'll say it again, I have received complaints about the ZBIA, and I've specifically received complaints particular to the two members that are up for reappointment. However, and I would ask the Board to say if this was different, I've not shared that with anybody unless asked. I was asked by Mr. Simoni, and I did share it with him. He asked me, and he is a Board Member, I respond to the Board Members, and I did absolutely respond to Mr. Simoni, that I received complaints about these two individuals a year ago. I haven't had that conversation in at least a year, Mr. Simoni, but I did, a year ago, have that conversation, and I did receive complaints. And I would be specific to say that the complaints came in with regard to actions or votes that those particular Board Members had taken, and a couple of attitudes of those Board Members toward the public. It came in from both commercial applicants to the Board, as well as residents who were watching the Board Members. However, I've not said that publicly, nor have I had any private conversations, and I would say, Mr. Holstrom asked me about who was on the Board this year and what their terms were, and I did send him the information on that. And he also asked me if there were any alternate seats, and my response to Mr. Holstrom, which I will share with everybody, is that we have two alternates on the Board. Those alternates can be appointed by this Board as full members if they wanted to. I believe last year, this Board appointed an alternate as a full member when one of the full members resigned. So that was my response to Mr. Holstrom. I, again, my personal opinion doesn't play into this, and I don't have a personal opinion, but I do have an absolute statement that I have received complaints, and if any of the Board Members besides Mr. Simoni had asked me, I would have shared that, but he did ask me that a year ago.
Mr. Holstrom?
Yeah, I think where we are right now, I think we still have the opportunity for volunteers to come forward. These people have showed a great interest, they're willing to learn this. We have experienced members on the Board now, and we also have a great support system with our Inspection Services Division, with Adam Burney and Nick Antonavica. So they're not going in cold, they're not going in blind, they are willing to learn, and a support system is there for them, and I feel that we should go forward with Mr. Chacolo.
Mr. Simoni?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just going to say this. You've seen me up here for three years. I've owned up to everything I've said, for the good or for the bad, I've faced the repercussions, I've taken the credit when necessary, and I've faced the music when folks didn't like some of the things I said. But if nothing else, I have been honest, and I'm going to tell you right now, a conversation took place in October between myself and the Town Manager, in which she indicated to me that she felt, based on the way that they handled people who came before the Board, she didn't feel that they were the two best candidates to stay on the Board. I'm not going to get into a back and forth. She has her side, I have mine. I think, in fairness to two people who have served the Town for as long and as honorably as these two gentlemen have, they have a right to know everyone who gave input into this process, and that's all I'm going to say.
So, I have a question from the New Board Members. So we have a motion for Mr. Lawrence Chacolo, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
So we will make the appointments, and there are two. Sharon, can you let me know who the alternate are? Mr. Tatro and...
Mr. Tatro and Mr. Kerwin.
Kerwin? So, according to the Town Clerk, after the appointments are made, we would need to designate full members and alternate members. That needs to come from this Board. It's been at least a past practice of the Board to move alternates up and then put any new members as an alternate, so we will address that after the next appointment. So we have our first member appointed. Is there another motion?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Megan Roach to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Simoni?
Yeah, are we, are we just speaking out now? We're not raising hands anymore?
Thanks.
Okay. I've given every ounce of respect that I can to this Board in the time that I've been here, and I just can't believe this is going on.
Certainly, if you want to nominate, I'm sorry, do we have a second on Mrs. Roach? Mrs. Brotherton? Mr. Simoni, if you want to nominate someone, you're welcome to do that.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Page and Mr. Natoli.
Well, I'll take them one at a time.
Okay, I'd like to nominate Mr. Page.
Is there a second? The Chair will second that.
And I'd like to nominate Mr. Natoli.
Is there a second? The Chair will second that. So, Mr. Simoni, and you can speak to those nominations first. You made the motion. I'm sorry, Mr. Holstrom, you nominated Megan Roach, you can address that one first.
Again, I feel that new members coming forward, volunteers, give them an opportunity to serve the Town, and there is a support system with the Inspection Services Department. They're not coming in cold or blind, they are willing to learn and to move the Town forward, and I think we are in our best interest to vote Megan Roach as, to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Okay, is, is there additional comment on the nomination of Megan Roach? Mr. Simoni?
Yeah, um, she's obviously not here, but if she is watching, I just want to say that this is in no way, I hope she doesn't take these comments personally, from a professional standpoint, she sat up here and I point-blank asked her if she had even taken the time to do something as simple as watch a planning, a single Planning Board meeting, and her answer was no. I appreciate her honesty, but I do not think, and I'm, and I'm just going to, I don't expect to hold someone to these standards, and I'm not, I'm not advocating for what I, I'm just going to give you an example as a point of reference. When I first ran for Selectmen, before I ran for Selectmen, I sat on Town Meeting for two years to learn how the Town Government worked, the ins and outs, and when I decided to run for Selectmen, I spent hours and hours of my personal time calling and meeting with Department Heads and anyone in the Town who would have had the time to sit down with me and talk to me, and that was prior to the election. Just in case I got elected, I wanted to hit the ground running and at least have a working knowledge of what was going to go on up here. For someone to sit here and say that they couldn't even watch one meeting, I, I, there is no way I can see how anyone could support a candidate like that who doesn't even have the, put in the effort to watch one single meeting and at least have an idea of what that Board does. So I cannot support that candidate.
Is there any additional comment on Megan Roach's nomination? I will just say that I, I watch all of the Zoning Board of Appeals meetings. At our appointments last year, I specifically asked the members who were up for reappointment, I addressed my concerns with them not speaking up enough, not participating enough, not asking questions. I have real concerns with the lack of participation from that Board, and a concern with losing experience with, and I struggled with this, losing experience watching the most recent meetings. If we, we have a Board made up of the existing members minus Mr. Natoli and Mr. Page, and the two new members, I have a real concern with direction and experience on that Board. So we have a motion for Megan Roach, and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed? I am. I have a motion for...
I'd like to make a motion for Jeff Murray.
Is there a second? The Chair will second it for discussion. Mr. Grossman?
Yes, Mr. Murray is well-experienced in matters that come before the ZBIA, and I think that he would have necessary information for conducting the meetings right from the start, and not have as much of a learning process as the others would in their positions.
Mr. Simoni?
Again, Mr. Murray, tough, he seems, seems like a nice guy. He obviously has the experience to be on this Board, but something that I wasn't aware of during the interview process and after our last meeting, some people called me, including members of our Charter Review Committee, who informed me that Mr. Murray was a member of that Committee and missed an overwhelming majority of those meetings. And also, I believe it was the Veterans Committee, people who were part of that Committee, said that he missed several meetings there. Given the past history, I don't know if it's his work schedule, if it's personal commitments, whatever it is, but the ZBIA is certainly not the type of Board where you can miss a majority of the meetings. Like I said, seems like a really nice guy, obviously has the experience, but you can't vote and you can't participate if you're not there. So to me, the track record speaks for itself. I can't support Mr. Murray.
Is there any other comment on, on the motions? So I'll go in the order of the motions, and I am going to ask for a roll call on this, to be clear that we have majority...excuse me. The first motion was for Mr. Wayne Page. Mr. Holstrom?
No.
Mrs. Brotherton?
No.
Mr. Simoni?
Yes.
Mr. Grossman?
No.
And the Chair votes yes. Next, we have Mr. Dennis Natoli. Mr. Holstrom?
No.
Mrs. Brotherton?
No.
Mr. Simoni?
Yes.
Mr. Grossman?
No.
The Chair votes yes. Was that, Mr. Holstrom, no?
No.
Mrs. Brotherton?
No.
Mr. Simoni?
Yeah, for Mr. Natoli? Yes.
Mr. Grossman again? No, okay. So, so we have a motion for Mr. Jeff Murray. Mr. Holstrom?
No.
Mrs. Brotherton?
No.
No.
Mr. Simoni?
No.
Mr. Grossman?
Yes.
And the Chair votes no. So we have one member appointed. Do members wish to reconsider any of their votes, or do they want to put it on the next Is there any discussion on that? We have one appointment for the Zoning Board of Appeals for...Mr. Simoni?
Yeah, since you asked for a discussion, I'm just going to bring it up one more time. I think that this is a huge mistake to remove this amount of experience from the Board. You're talking about, what, over thirty years between the two of them? I think it's a huge mistake. I think it hurts the Town in so many ways, and we're supposed to be, we were elected to do what's best for the Town, and I just don't see how we're doing that right now.
It's your last warning, very last one. Thank you. So we have appointed Mr. Chacolo as a member. Mr. Tatro and Mr. Kerwin are alternate members. The Board would now need to either appoint Mr. Chacolo as a full member, or move Mr. Tatro or Mr. Kerwin up as a full member. Mr., it's my understanding, Mr. Tatro has been on the Board longer than, am I correct? Has Mr. Tatro been on the Board longer than Mr. Kerwin? And it's past, past practice to move members up, so Mr. Tatro is the longest-serving member. Is there a motion? We need to designate whether they are alternates or full members.
Motion to appoint Mr. Tatro as an alternate member. Or reappoint, is he up for reappointment?
He's not up, so, so we don't, you don't need to take any action. So we need to, we need to designate one of the members as a full member. We have Mr. Tatro and Mr. Kerwin who are alternates. We have Mr. Chacolo, who the Board just, just appointed, but we need to designate one of them as a full member.
Motion to designate Mr. Kerwin as a full member.
Is there a second? Mr. Holstrom? Is there any discussion? Mr. Holstrom?
Yes.
Mrs. Brotherton?
Yes.
Mr. Simoni?
Yes.
Mr. Grossman?
Yes.
And the Chair votes no, just because it's been past practice to nominate the, to move up the longest-standing member. So we have an extra member on the Board. Could I, I want, could I have a motion to recess for three minutes, please?
Show moved.
Second.
We're in recess for three minutes. What's that? Call this meeting back to order. Did you have something, Mr. Simoni?
Before we move on to our next item, I, given the amount of service and time that Mr., both Mr. Page and Mr. Natoli put in on the Zoning Board, I'd just like to thank you. Years' time, countless hours, I'm sure, of your own personal time dedicated to what you've done for the Town, I just want to say thank you.
So, so we're actually not finished on this item. So we've just appointed two, two full members to the Zoning Board of Appeals. We have a vacancy for an alternate member. Members may reconsider one of the names we have as an alternate, or we can re-advertise, and any member is welcome to put in for that position. Mr. Holstrom?
I'd make a motion that we appoint Megan Roach as an alternate to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Is there a second? Is there a second? There is no second. Is there a motion or are we gonna hold this to the next meeting? We will hold this to the next meeting. Thank you everyone for coming in. Next item we have is the board of registrars. We have Michael McNamara is seeking to be reappointed as the designee on the board of registrars. Is there a motion?
Make a motion that we appoint Michael McNamara to the board of registrars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on this appointment? It's the only application, and this came through the town clerk's office. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Next, you have the appointment of election workers from 2013 to 2014. And closed, we have a list provided by the town clerk. Members have had the opportunity to review that list. This comes directly from the town clerk. These are her election workers for each election. Is there a motion? Mr. Simonian?
Well, I'll wait till after the motion's made.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'd make a motion to appoint the election workers 2013 and 2014 as the list provided by the town clerk.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Simonian, under discussion?
Yeah, I've probably been asked before, just can't remember. Year over year, is there anything required of these folks prior to reappointment or after reappointment? Just...
No, she just has to have a balance of party affiliation.
Any, anything, anything that would disqualify anyone or anything that we as a town need to do prior to their reappointment, just?
No, I mean, I would, the town clerk has reviewed this list to make sure they all qualify, and I would assume, and I shouldn't assume anything, but if the town clerk had any issues with any of her election workers, I would assume that she wouldn't put them back on the appointment list.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Next item, entertainment license. Before we open the hearing, I just want to, as members voted back some time, I believe it was when we had an application for Sheldon's for an outdoor entertainment license, the board took a vote to ask the subcommittee to formulate an entertainment license policy. I have been working on that. I have asked for input from different departments. We will be bringing an entertainment license policy forward to the board soon. I just want to put that on the record so that there's no question that this entertainment license policy came as a result of tonight's hearing. It didn't, it was a motion that was made some time ago. We will be coming forward with separate policies, one for an indoor entertainment license and one for an outdoor entertainment license. Having said that, the license application before you is for an entertainment license which would include indoor and outdoor entertainment, based on a previous opinion from the Massachusetts Ethics Commission. I recused myself when Sheldon's came in for their entertainment license due to the proximity of my home to the business, and I received the same advice from the Massachusetts Ethics Commission, so I will be recusing myself from this hearing. So, I will turn the gavel over to Mr. Grossman and ask him to open the hearing.
Motion to open the hearing?
So moved. Second.
Good evening, Mr. Grossman and all the members of the select board. For the record, my name is Paul O'Brien. I'm a lawyer here in Auburn. I'm representing Jay Anthony's Grill tonight in this entertainment license application. As you can see from the application, we're looking for indoor and outdoor. The nature of the entertainment is basically a music feed in both indoor and outdoor. It'll be the same feed, what comes out onto the speakers inside is the same that goes outside. The exception to that may be when there are sporting events and they have a television outside. There will be televised entertainment, if you will, if this license is approved, but the audio feed for those televisions will be from the same speakers. What they're proposing is two speakers. I've provided you with a sheet that shows a picture of the speakers as well as the dimensions and the wattage, et cetera, et cetera. These are not large entertainment type speakers for concerts, for big outdoor venues. They're the kind of thing that you would use in your home. In fact, Bose sells them to homes primarily. They're used as surround sound speakers. They're used as music speakers in your house, music speakers in your deck. They're not big commercial speakers. The dimensions of the speakers are roughly four and a half inches by six by twelve, just to give you an idea of the scale. So, they're about this long, about that deep, about that high. There're gonna be two of them. They're gonna be up in the eve on the side of the building facing towards Auburn, more or less parallel to the town line, and they'll be up in the eaves where the bifold doors open up. On the plan, on this side of the plan where the patio is, up on the wall there, there's a couple of Xs. They're kind of small, but there wasn't much room to put them, and those two Xs indicate the approximate location. As far as the history of this establishment and music, back around the 1995-94 area, there were problems there. There was loud music, there were outside bands. This is not what we're doing. There's been different management in this restaurant for the last nine months. Mr. Vlatiko's son, Jason Vlatiko, who is here in the first row, is now the manager of the restaurant. He has a different vision of that restaurant than his father did. His father is happy right now to sit back and watch his son go, and so I don't believe that you will have the problem that was before. It's a totally different nature, it's a totally different source, and the equipment being used reflects that. Before, I'm sure that the speakers, the amplifiers were big stuff. They came in on a truck, because that's usually the way bands travel. This won't. If there are any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. I did give you a packet relative to the DEP noise control regulation, which basically indicates that outdoor noise such as this should be no more than ten decibels above the ambient noise at the property line of the establishment. Right now, my client has run a test on the ambient noise in that area, and it's about seventy-seven, seventy-eight, seventy-nine decibels, and he basically ran a computer program that did it throughout the day and the night, and it's pretty consistent in that seventy-eight to seventy-seven or so decibel, which would basically indicate that somewhere around eighty-seven or eighty-nine decibels is the ballpark, which would be permissible under the DEP rules. I received that information from Darlene in the board of health, she was, at the board of health, she was very kind as to send that over to me. Is there any questions?
Mr. Simonian? All right. So, I have a few, but regarding the speakers, I'm gonna admit to you that I don't know much about them. What I can tell you is I have two speakers for my computer that are about this big, and if I turn them all the way up, I can walk across the street to my neighbor's house and still hear them. Now, I'm not saying that as a negative. My point being that I think with today's technology, I know you can get fairly small speakers that are fairly loud. What it comes down to for me is, it's a matter of trust. You got a neighborhood, you guys are aware of the history. It's already been brought up before. The police chief wrote us a letter about the past history. I understand, it was your dad. I'm not advocating against it, I'm just saying. My question is to you if you would come up. And I apologize, because I already forgot your first name, and it's, Jason, I'm sorry. I apologize. You know everything, everything that the town has had, the police chief, everyone and their position. What do you say to those people? How do they, how do you change their mind? How do you, how do you tell them that this is gonna be responsible? You're gonna have these speakers, but you're not gonna turn them up to the point where they're gonna be a nuisance to the neighborhood behind you and all that. I'm giving you the opportunity to answer all those things that have kind of, some have been said in public, some have been whispered around, whatever. I want to hear from you.
Okay. No, I totally agree with you. It's been up and down like the stock market throughout the years. I totally agree with that. And how I look at it with Jay Anthony's, we shut down October, reopened in November. From November on, I think diligently, we worked with both towns and built a better relationship throughout that time. I totally agree. And throughout that time, I worked with Nick and Town of Oxford as well, and we kind of pinpointed certain areas and worked with those areas. I've spent almost every night studying and learning about ambient noise to make everybody happy. And when we talked with Nick, I totally agree on setting a certain level, because I don't want to keep going on with this whole noise thing. I'm in it for the better of the business, and I'm looking at a different vision, which has to carry us five, ten years down the road. And within the last six months, I have tried to do my best to build up the social end of it. That's what I really work hard at, on the media end. And within the last six months, I've been all positive, and that's all I'm going for, meaning food and on the social end of things too. And I don't want to go bring any negative into the media, because we all know where that goes.
Okay. I think that, my feeling is, at some point, as a town, trying to work together with our residents and our businesses, we have to, you know, where we've had problems in the past, we have to, we have to look at it anew, and we can't continue to hold everyone responsible for what we perceive as sins of the past. I personally support it, because I think that, you know, giving your business another opportunity to prove themselves certainly is something we should do. That said, I can pretty much guarantee you that there's gonna be folks who are gonna complain just for the sake of saying, because there's a past history there. And I don't want, if, if that does take place, if you get this entertainment license and that does take place, I don't want the relationship between the town and your business to continue to be contentious one. We should, we've been, we've been trying to advocate for saying that Auburn is a place that's friendly to businesses. So, I think, given that philosophy, we do need to reach out to businesses and where we've had issues, try and mend those fences. I think this may be one, a step in that direction, in my opinion. So, I mean, I'm just trying to lay all the cards on the table here. You, you've been there. It's your, it's your family's business, not mine. I can only go by what has been said to me, what's been presented to me in the last year, what I've read, going back and looking at past history, and all of the things that, the opinion of the police chief, which, you know, matters, absolutely matters. And I understand that, you know, there's, you know, some issues there. So, if this happens, I want to see you guys in the town work together to not have a contentious relationship. And I know that effort needs to be on both sides, but, you know, I mean, like I said, cards on the table, this is where we're at. So...
That's my opinion, and I appreciate your honesty. I appreciate you being very candid with your answer.
Well, no, I totally agree with you. The odds are not in my favor to start with. And I think on your end, the liability is way more harder, because everyone, I know there's people that live in this town that are not for this, and they're speaking up throughout the years. So, I understand if you do do this, the repercussions from my end, if I do go in the negative end, is really bad.
I'm glad to hear you say that.
Mr. Holstrom?
Through the chair. Jason, on your permit here, it proposes indoor and outdoor radio music and outdoor video sports events with audio and a keynote board. The keynote board, I can understand, but when you have outdoor events, sports events on a video, it's not only if you've got speakers that are gonna be noisy, it's the people that are gonna be noisy, especially when you get into playoffs. And that can upset the neighborhood also. And there's no way that you can limit that noise there. So, the only thing I could see to limit that is to not have any of that on the outside and have it only on the inside. Response?
No, I could totally, I will work with the board. I'm not here to fight or anything like that. But the, how we're presenting this to you is we're doing this off just the restaurant feed. So, the restaurant feed has an A and a B output. So, basically, A is music, and if there's a sports event like Boss Bruins championship, you turn it to B, and that goes on. So, if you do want just music out there, it would be on a different feed.
Okay, but also on the video, or through, I'm sorry, through the chair, also the video, again, you have the sports games and you have a large crowd out there. Now, you can't quell that crowd, and if it's late night where some of these games are, then the neighbors are gonna hear it, and then we're gonna be hearing the responses from the police department that they're going back out there for, you know, quieting the neighborhood down. And I guess we're between a rock and hard place here of how we limit that to be sure that the neighbors are taken care of and you can maintain your business.
No, I totally agree with you. It's a negotiation. Like, what we're trying to do is no TVs outside whatsoever. So, I can strictly...
You're saying what, outside?
We do not have any TVs outside. So, the only reason you would have the news, the sports feed outside is because it's on the same input. I can always have outside on a separate input, but I was trying to please the board by having on the same input, so you can understand that the decibels would not be loud outside, because it would be the same inside.
Again, through the chair, you're looking for an outdoor video, and an outdoor video will bring people to, you know, yell and scream and, you know, cheer on their team.
Yes.
And you can't squash that noise. That noise can, you know, loud, it could go soft. If it's eleven o'clock at night, you're disturbing the neighbors. It's one of those things I have a hard time with how you would control that. You know, I'd like to hear from the neighbors, and I've heard from the neighbors also, that they don't want to have anything on the outside as far as music, any kind of entertainment whatsoever, so that it keeps the noise level down and keeps it functional, so that we don't go back to the nineties again.
But at the same time, the, there is no amplifier, and I understand with his point as well, and how small speakers can produce huge decibels. That's a hundred percent true. It could do that. But what we're trying to do is not that at all. You're, we're planning around about six decibels over ambient, and we can have that within whatever we're doing.
The most units that you're proposing
Correct.
can be tiny units and produce real loud music.
Yes.
So, there is the possibility of, if they're in there, of someone turning it up and having loud music and complaints coming from the neighborhood.
Oh, I totally agree with you on, but like he was bringing up too before, there is a trust issue, and I'm trying to build as much as I possibly can, and it... Oh, no, there is a trust issue there, and how I have it planned is we're using the amplifier inside. So, if I can't turn that amplifier up too much, or the receiver, the reason being is I would make all my customers inside basically leave just to make it loud outside, which would be defeating my whole purpose.
We have, and it's up to the board, we have a subcommittee right now that's working on the entertainment license and the rules and regulations of what you can and cannot have. The board perhaps can wait until that's complete and the vote is taken on that policy before any of these changes take place.
I don't know, I don't know how long it's gonna take for that to happen, and I mean, the summer could be over before we get that policy. I mean, and I guess I would go back to the precedent we already set, when we went through this with the taxicab policy. While we had a subcommittee, we granted a license and then said that at some point it would change when a policy was available. So, I think we should, we should at least follow the precedent we already set. So, through the chair, I want to go back, because you have, I don't know if you're missing the point, we still haven't answered Mr. Holstrom's question, and I think it's a fair question, and I...
We still haven't answered Mr. Holstrom's question and I think it's a fair question and I think it's a good question. You can control the noise from the speakers. I, I don't dispute that at all. His point is you cannot control the noise of the crowd outside. And I can tell you right now, I had three friends at my house during the Toronto series in game seven, when the Bruins came back from a four to one deficit. I guarantee you, some of my neighbors probably heard me and my friends. So that's-
They were probably all watching too.
You can't, if, if you have a game where there's that kind of intensity, it's a local team that you have, I don't, I, I forgot what the capacity of patio is. But if you have all of those folks watching that game and it's, they get loud and rowdy because the game is that intense, you can't control that. That is a concern. So, you know, for me, the balance here is if we give you, if we grant the entertainment license, there's a risk of upsetting the, all, all the neighbors over there. I, I, I fully understand that and I have a responsibility to them as we, as we all. At the same time, bringing business into the community, that's also our responsibility. Having, having, uh, good partnerships and good neighbors and all of that is part of our responsibility. So I guess at the end of the day, we're kind of taking the risk and all, and all, there's some risk and some trust put on you as well because I, I can tell you that I, if it got to the point where you were back here with a lot of complaints, and like I said, I realize there's probably going to be a few from some people who are upset if you get this license. Have to take, take a, a hard look at, at the, you know, at the license, you know? So the point is, again, I appreciate you being candid. I, and, and I think that, you know, it's, it's time. We, we give that second chance. Um, that's, that's my opinion. But I, as long as you understand where I'm coming from, I, what, what I and probably all of us are going to expect from you if we give you this entertainment license. That, you know, you're on your employees, hey, keep it down to this, I don't want, don't turn it up. There's going to be repercussions. We can't, we've got neighbors, we've got, you know, all of that. So.
I'd like to make one statement regarding comments that Mr. Simoni made regarding the taxicab policy and voting something in until such time that the policy was complete. That's a different situation than like when we had the Sheldon had entertainment there. They, they had the entertainment, but it wasn't in the evening. It was during the day, daytime hours where it wouldn't keep people up in the evening. So you're talking about two different things.
If I could just have a moment with my client. I just, I just want to have a conversation with him about this issue.
Chairman, uh, while they're discussing that, um, our next meeting is in August on the eighth or the 12th. Uh, at that time, will that, uh, policy be in place and, uh, we'll be ready to vote on it so that we can act on this at that point?
Can't answer, I'm not on the committee.
That would be my feeling that, uh, if, uh, it isn't, um, if it's being worked on right now and we can have it for the August meeting, I would say, let's hold it and be sure we have a piece of paper in front of us, uh, so that we're not, well, yeah, we can do it this way and then the next person come forward and say, well, we have to do it this way, but this person's already got it in place. I'd rather keep some consistency there. So I would like to see this table till our August meeting.
Mr. Grossman?
Yes.
Uh, in answer to, uh, Mr. Holstrom's concern about the TV, uh, my client is willing to not have a TV outside. I think that'll take care of the crowd issue in terms of crowd noise.
So will there, there'll just be keynote machines outside?
No keynote at all either. The only, the only thing would be still the feed. So there would be sports outside, but then that would solve the issue, I believe, if it's like a championship game and it's like listening in the car and you want to get to the TV right away. So therefore it'd go inside, how I would look at it.
If you have 60 people or more sitting outside the tables talking and you got a little speaker uh, up above, how are they going to hear the sound of what's going on without it being accessible to them?
Well, it will still be the same feed inside. So like anything with the restaurant, you can still talk and listen to a game. And if you move, no TVs outside and just have TVs inside, the feed will still be minimal. And the reality is you're not going to have 60 people outside if there's no TV out there during a championship game. And that's where you'll have your most volume too, I believe.
Mr. Simoni. Yeah, uh, I don't think it's fair to table this till August. I think, I, like I said, we set the precedent. We can't keep flip flopping on businesses. We can't keep treating people like this. If, if we set a precedent, we have to stick to it. When the taxicab issue came up, we granted it and we said, here's what's going to happen. We're going to give you this now. We're, we're working on a policy and when that policy is put in place, you're going to abide by the new policy. And I think that we've set the precedent, we should do the same here. The flip flopping is just ridiculous. And, and why are we treating businesses differently? Why, why aren't we, why aren't we applying the same logic to, to, to the roughly, relatively the same argument? It doesn't make any sense to do this. It gives the appearance that we're treating businesses differently, which goes back to the perception that Auburn is not friendly towards businesses. Auburn has issues with businesses. I, I don't want to be part of that.
And, uh, Ms. Brotherton?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the license provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all conditions stated upon it. For you to comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license and run, render it, excuse me, null and void. With this being said through the vice chair, I would like to add that I am on the subcommittee. Um, I wish I could promise Mr. Holstrom, Mr. Simoni and yourself, sir, that we could have this done by the 12th, but with vacation restraints and family illnesses and whatever that have come upon us this summer, I'd hate to make that promise. Having said that though, there has to be new policies in place and I think it would be unfair, as Mr. Simoni did say, what's good for one is not good for the other. So I would like to see you have this license, but I also need to express to you that once these license, once these new policies are in place, they would apply not just to you, Mr. Velatigo, but to all other businesses and future licenses that come before us.
Ms. Brotherton, thank you for explaining that. Uh, when we went to see the DCG, we were informed of that as well and we expected that that would be the case, that they would be subject to the policy.
We have a motion and second. All in favor?
I have a question first before we get into them. Uh, through the chair, we discussed about we were going to, you were going to take the outdoor video of sports events gone. Is that still going to be the case? And so going to be just the speakers out? I want to just be sure we clarify what's on the permit and what we're voting on here tonight. So that, you know, when we get there, well, the keynote board is outside, the video board is, but we understood it only to be speakers. So I guess I want to understand perfectly what we're going to have outside. And if that, if you're saying no video and no keynote, I want to see that removed from the permit before we vote on that tonight.
And it'll only be the two speakers?
Agreed. TV inside. Uh, can the permit be-
Do you want to amend your, your, uh, motion?
Amend it regarding, I'm sorry, vice chair, as far as the speakers, amending the license that the speakers-
Did we grant the license once that provision is, once that is removed from the-
Yes. I'd make a motion to amend that. The license so it states that these speakers will not be, only the two small speakers will be included.
Number two.
And I second the amendment, amended motion.
Okay. Mr. Holstrom? Asking for vote.
Oh. Yes.
Ms. Brotherton?
Yes.
Mr. Simoni?
Yes, but I, um, we'll finish first.
Mr. Grossman, yes. Go ahead.
Yeah, just the one last thing that we didn't ask you and has always been asked. You are aware of all the conditions from the DCG on the, on the license?
Yes.
You're, oh, wherever. Okay.
So just for the record, audio outside only. Audio and TV inside with keynote. Inside?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure we're all on the same, same page.
Only thing outside is the two videos.
Just the two, audio speakers. Correct.
Audio speakers.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Did you close the hearing? Did you guys close the hearing?
Yeah, the hearing's closed.
No, we didn't. Motion to close the hearing.
I, I just, I won't part, I won't participate, but did you close the hearing on the-
No, we didn't. Motion to close the hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So we're on.
Shame on me.
Number four, we have gift acceptance for the, um, Police K-9 gift account from Sure Shots Promotions and the amount of $272.
Make a motion to accept with gratitude.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Um, to the, oh, this is a nice story, from Adrian and Kathleen Prunia and the amount of $50. Their daughter Maggie Prunia raised money for kennel animals in lieu of birthday presents. She bought boxes of toys, foods, food and supplies plus $50 for animal care. Is there a motion?
Well done and thoughtful and I make a motion that we, uh, accept that with our gratitude.
And I also would like to add that we sent her a letter.
Sent her a letter, I was hoping.
I will second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both so voted. To the DPW for the food for animals in the kennel from Linda Lazon and the amount of $25.
Motion to accept with gratitude.
And we have, I know we had one come in at the end. Um, from Joan Shay and the, the value of it is approximately $200. It's a desk and it is for information technology.
Make a motion to accept with gratitude.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both so voted. It's a beautiful desk. Sure enjoy it. We have no proclamations. Under member items, we have Mr. Holstrom requests subcommittee to formulate a policy for boarding commission appointment, excuse me, process. Mr. Holstrom, if you'd like to speak to your item?
Yeah, um, we've had, uh, since I've been a member of this board, uh, we've had several members come forward for reappointments and also some volunteers coming forward for appointment, uh, consideration. And I don't think that all parties have been treated fairly. And I think that, uh, in fairness to all, uh, candidates coming forward, whether it be for reappointment or for uh, first appointment, I think that we should have some sort of a guideline, um, so that we can follow that along and not be just a, a third degree or a questioning of, uh, anything coming forward. I think that what we should have is set this up so that, uh, we ask the pertinent questions about information, who they are, what their interests are and go forward from there. And I think we should have a policy so that spells that all out so everybody gets treated the same.
Mr., excuse me, Mr. Simoni?
Um, through the chair, Mr. Holstrom, I guess I would ask what the basis of you fair, your opinion is that candidates have been treated unfairly.
I never said they were treated unfairly. I think that, uh, sometimes the, uh, consistency is not there. So I guess I will stand corrected there. The consistency of asking questions for candidates coming forward for an appointment, uh, by this board, sometimes all the questions, sometimes there are different questions come forward. I think we should have a new application, uh, set up for pertinent information and have questions set up and developed by all the board members. Uh, so all the board members have a, uh, input as to what questions should be asked. And, uh, for, that's for reappointed members, uh, people coming back for reappointment or for new members coming forward.
Mr. Simoni?
Yeah, um, I, I, I guess I have to disagree because, on, on two points. I think that one, uh, every candidate, whether they're asking to be reappointed or appointed, submits information to us and they all have different backgrounds. Um, if we were to, if we were to ask a list of standardized questions, doesn't really make much sense to me because we should have the flexibility to ask questions to their experience. Um, I think if you're standardizing questions, you absolutely could miss specific things in someone's background that could make, that could hurt them or make them, or give them an advantage. And also if members of this board have a, a more in-depth knowledge on a specific subject, um, that could certainly handcuff that person from asking questions. I, I mean, give you the case we just had. I don't know anything about speakers, but if one of you did, I would absolutely advocate for you to ask as many questions as possible to nail down exactly what we're talking about. And I think to put a policy in place, that would certainly handcuff the ability of someone with that kind of knowledge to do that. I, I, I just, I, I think that, you know, we've, we've been respectful, we've been fair, we've asked questions based on our experience, our knowledge. And, and I mean, that's what we were elected to do. And like I said, every single person comes before us with a different, from a different background and we should be, have the freedom to ask questions to that background and not a standard question that eliminates something that, an area where someone shines or that's a deficiency.
Mr. Holstrom?
Uh, I would like to see a policy looked at anyway by the, uh, subcommittee and let them come back and tell us whether it's something we can use or we can't use. I think it's something that we should do and, uh, have some consistency to, uh, all the candidates coming forward, whether it be for reappointment or for appointment.
So, um, Mr. Holstrom, since it's, it's your item, I, I just want to be sure I have a clear understanding. Cause I'm, I'm, I don't, I'm, I'm not in favor of, of limiting the questions that members can ask. But if you're, if you're looking for something similar to previous interviews where, where members ask the same question of every applicant and then if a follow-up question comes out of their response, you can ask a follow-up question? I, I mean, are you looking, are you looking for policy where members provide?
I don't want to tie the board's hands. I want to be sure we get the information that we need to make a intelligent decision on, you know, somebody coming forward. But I don't think that, um, in the cases where we've done interviews with different individuals, it seems like it's
willy-nilly.
It's not been, uh, a, a process that has been consistent and fair. And, uh, I would like to see if there is some way that we could do that and, uh, make it a little bit more of a professional interview than it is just throwing questions out to, uh, the candidates.
And, you know, I'll just say, you know, for myself, I, I, I try to have my questions prepared and ask all applicants the same question or at least a similar question. You may have to reword it in the case of an existing member and someone who's looking to become a member.
I am just requesting that the, uh, subcommittee take a look at it. If they come back and find that it's not going to work, then we'll say so. But, uh, you know what? I'd like to take a look at that.
Mr. Simoni?
Yeah, um, again, I, I just, I, I just don't see where this benefits the board in any way, shape or form. Ms. Roach, who was, she was the only candidate, I believe, who was an attorney. I, I may be wrong, but is it not, is it not fair for her to be asked based on the fact that she was the only one who was, I believe, a real estate attorney? the only one who was, I believe, a real estate attorney, what is it about your experience as a real estate attorney you think would help the zoning board? You couldn't ask that of any other member. So if we have standardized questions, again, that question's off the table. That speaks to her experience. It gives her the opportunity to demonstrate to us how her experience would benefit that board or committee that she is applying for. And I have to say, again, I can only speak for myself, but every time that there has been an appointment of any kind before this board, I have taken the information that we've been given in our packet and any comments that anyone has given publicly, and I have gone and researched that background that has been presented to me and spent a considerable amount of time preparing the questions that I've prepared. And I don't think I've ever been unfair to anyone. I've tried to ask the same basic questions and then questions on top of that that speak to their experience. I think that is fair, to give the board the freedom to delve into someone's background. Standardized questions, I just think it's a bad idea.
Mr. Holstrom, are you putting that in the form of a motion?
Yes, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
So certainly, I'm guessing that a policy like this will have to come back to the board a couple of times because I'm really not sure of the direction that you want to go on this.
I understand strictly from review, it's possible that we won't change the policy.
Well, we don't have a policy right now, so it's, I guess, adopting a policy for inquiries.
I wanted to comment, I guess, on that then. I guess, as much as I hate to say this, you probably should, probably should check with legal counsel to make sure that we don't write a policy that, you know, restricts anyone's rights in any way. I hate to say that because I know it costs money to do it, but.
Well, as I've requested in the past, I don't want to send anything to town council and then have it come before the board and have the board vote, know that they don't want to adopt the policy. We should certainly bring it back to the board to see if there's interest in adopting the policy and then have it reviewed. Because we don't want to spend the money to have council review a policy that the board may not adopt.
Makes sense.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else on this? Okay, we have town manager items. The first item is an appointment of a department head.
Ms. Jacobson? Thank you. Through the chair. As you know, the reorganization plan was approved in April 2011, which then became effective on May 19 of 2011. And since that time, over the past two years, town administration, with the guidance of the Board of Selectmen, has worked very hard to implement that plan and to make amendments, all of which have enhanced the delivery of services to the citizens of Auburn. Key to the successful implementation of that plan and also to, in general, the effective operations of any government is, at all levels, is the ability to develop and build a strong leadership team. Under Section 3.06 of the Charter, as amended in May of 2009, the Select Board must confirm the town manager's appointments of department heads and the town manager recommends those appointments based on merit and fitness alone. Again, per Section 3.06 of the Charter. So tonight, I'm seeking your confirmation of Mr. Adam Burney as the Director of the Department of Development and Inspeccional Services. Mr. Burney has served in the Acting Director position since last September, so that's September of 2012, as acting. Over the past 10 months as Acting Director and prior to that, as Assistant Director of the Department, for which he was the Assistant for about a year as well during the whole, shortly after the reorganization plan went into effect, to try to watch how he handled it and he did a great job, and then I made him the Acting Director. He's proven himself to be a strong leader and he demonstrates the skills that make him more than qualified for the position of Director. Adam's been professional, responsive, diligent, and thorough. He's been a true team player in this administration and a leader within his department. He's demonstrated the ability to oversee the day-to-day operations in the administration of the Department of Development and Inspeccial Services. He communicates well with his employees and with the public. And that, as you may know, that office, that department has a number of different divisions under it, all of which involve a lot of interaction with the public, including customer service. Adam's been able to identify creative solutions to fiscal and operational issues that the department has faced, as well as participating in department head meetings where he's given input on broader town initiatives. His qualifications and experience make him a great fit for this important position and as a member of our leadership team. Therefore, tonight, I'm seeking the board's confirmation of Adam Burney as the Director of the Department of Development and Inspeccial Services. And his resume is attached. I believe the board, at the last time an appointment was made, the board had asked that the resume be attached early on in the packet, so that was done last week. So you do have that. And I just want to highlight a couple of things from that. You know, obviously, he's been a key player in the reorganization. He has a high level of customer service experience. He has done master's level of research, including experimental design, data analysis, writing, and presentation. He has extensive public speaking and outreach experience. And he has a long history and widespread background working within developing zoning bylaws and subdivision regulations under Mass General Law. So his complete resume is attached for your review. And I also want to point out that he's been integral in the work on quite a few of the recent zoning bylaw revisions that we've had and also very active in the zoning bylaw review that we have been undergoing now for over a year. Adam has a bachelor's degree in arts and environmental design and a master's degree in public administration. He's also a member of the American Planning Association, the Mass Association of Conservation Commissions, the CMRPC Brownfield Advisory Committee, CMRPC Organizational Advisory Committee, Bridgewater State University Alumni Mentorship Program, the U.S. Soccer Federation, you never know when you need to play soccer in the development office, probably more than we imagine, and the North Bridge Master Plan Committee. So I want to respectfully request this board's consideration of the confirmation of this appointment.
Mr. Burney, did you want to say anything before the board takes action or did?
No, well, sure, I guess I will since I started. I'd like to thank Ms. Jacobson for the opportunity. I think over the past two or so years working in this position, I've learned a lot and I think that there's a lot going on. And I think that the team that I have below me has really helped build the department to where it is. And I think we've got some quality people and I think that my success is based on them. So I want to certainly thank them for all their efforts.
So does a member want to make a motion so we can discuss the appointment?
Make a motion to confirm the town manager's appointment of Adam Burney as Director of Development and Inspeccial Services.
Is there a second? Okay. Under discussion, do any members have anything?
Yeah, I guess I do.
Mr. Simoneon first and Mr. Holstrom?
Well, personally, in the three years I've been here and some of the discussions I've had with Mr. Burney, for the most part, I think he's done a pretty good job. But I guess, given what's transpired here tonight and going back to the whole flip-flopping thing, seems like we set a precedent of, based on a couple of criteria, that we wanted to move, this board seems to be in favor of moving in a new direction, bringing in new blood with new ideas. And also, mentioning out phone calls of complaints, so I guess, put that on the table. I have, at times, received complaints from residents who have dealt with Mr. Burney that he's been a little rude, I guess, I would say, to use their words. So, given the criteria we set earlier tonight, I would have to say no.
Mr. Holstrom, you were next.
Yeah, I've had a chance to work with Adam several times. I've approached him with questions, information's forthcoming, and he's been actually a very approachable person to work with. And I think that we should confirm his appointment tonight and make his department go forward. I think he'd be great in the leadership role of that department and I think the town will show improvement and progress.
Is there anything else? Mr. Grossman?
Yes. I had some concerns when this first came up and discussed it with the town manager and so on. And there has been vast improvement in the last couple of years from the way you were conducting yourself before. So you've taken the advice and have shown the improvement that needed to be taken.
I appreciate that.
So I'll just say, you know, my interactions with Mr. Burney have been nothing but professional. I know, as the manager said, you know, there are many divisions under Inspeccial Services and as, you know, as many of my board members also receive calls, you know, it's because of the sheer size of the department. We receive many calls from residents and anytime I've gone to Mr. Burney with a resident concern or question, he's been responsive and he has directed me to the appropriate person to help the resident. So again, he's been nothing but professional and I'm happy to support his confirmation. Does anyone have anything else? Is there any further discussion? So we'll do this by a roll call as well. Mr. Holstrom?
Yes.
Ms. Brotherton? Yes. Mr. Simoneon?
Nope.
Mr. Grossman?
Yes.
And the Chair, Roach.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you. And I just, I want to say to the board, I appreciate your opinion. I will once again make a statement that at any time, my door is open. I'm always willing to discuss issues about personnel matters, which shouldn't be discussed publicly, which should be discussed privately. And I respect the employees and I also understand that the board members sometimes have concerns. So I invite all the board members to have those discussions with me. Mr. Simoneon, I apologize, I didn't know that you had any complaints. You've never brought them to my attention about Mr. Burney.
When we talked about the issue that was going on over on Melba Ave, I told you that several residents had voiced concern with the way that Mr. Burney handled that.
And I believe that was addressed at that time.
It was addressed, but.
That's right. So I continue to say that when an issue was brought to my attention such as that, I do address it. I think any of the employees can tell you that when a complaint is received, it is addressed. I don't follow up publicly with how it was addressed. I can't do that. It is a personnel matter, but I have addressed any issue that the board's brought to my attention. I'll continue to do that. So I appreciate your confirmation. And if, again, if there are concerns and Mr. Grossman had brought something to my attention and that was addressed as well, I will continue to do that.
Thank you. Congratulations. The next item is the social media update.
Actually, before I get to that, I want to say one more thing as well. I also want to say, on that same note, as far as having an open door, I'm certainly willing to discuss with any member of any board or commission, any issues privately if they'd like to, publicly if they'd like to. I've had a conversation with Mr. Page and I respect Mr. Page and Mr. Nottoli and all our board members for their service. It is hard to get volunteers in the town, so, you know, anyone who agrees to serve, you know, has done it. You know, it's a good thing to do that. Mr. Page has come to me and I've had a conversation with him and I respect him and I certainly would have additional conversations with him. I'm happy to have any conversations with any additional former or current members of the board. I've always said my door's open and it remains open. I try to be cautious as to what I say publicly because I do respect people, so I don't want to bring issues up publicly, but I'm certainly willing to. And Mr. Page had a concern recently and he brought it to my attention and he had a right to bring that to my attention. And we discussed it and I'm willing to discuss anything additional with regard to that. So I just want to make that statement again while we're talking about appointments, because I too have appointments on boards and commissions in addition to those that the board has. And we all know it's a difficult process to get through and it's hard when you have more people. It's a good problem to have when you have more people than you have seats available. You know, it's better than the problem of not having enough applicants for the available seats, which is an issue too. But I think we do need to keep the process fair and equitable and, you know, I know I strive to do that and I know the board is trying to do that as well and has been doing that. So I'm willing to continue to work with the board and answer any questions that are brought to my attention. So I just want to go on to number two, social media update. This board, it was not a formal vote that I recall, but the board has had discussions in the past about considering the utilization of social media. And I listened to the board, I attended a couple of workshops on the issue and did a lot of research on the issue as far as whether we should be entering into the social media field, whether we should not, what are the pitfalls, what are the issues, how do we best do this? The bottom line is, I do think that social media is the way to go in the future for communicating with broader people. It's another mechanism of communication. We've got our website, we've got our community television, we have Code Red, we have a newsletter. We've developed a lot of communication mechanisms since I've been here and I think social media is the next wave of that. So I just wanted to let the board know that I did listen to your questions and your request to consider a social media site. So we are going to be launching a Facebook page. We have a social media written policy in place that will be posted and we're going to launch this page. And, you know, we hope that it encourages more people in town and out of town and the public to look and learn about Auburn. And we want to put sections on it about economic development, about what administration is doing, different events in town that are related to town government. It won't be a site for promoting private business, but if a private business came to a board or commission and got a permit or the Select Board spoke at an event, you know, there'll be certain ways that we can promote wonderful things that are happening in the community. It should all be about the positive. That's what this is about, it's getting positive messages out to the community. And just as importantly, it's another venue for getting information out. And I'll mention in a minute the cooling station, but we have things going on in town that we want the public to know about. And sometimes they may not be reading the other mechanisms, so the more we can do, the better. So if it is radio, TV, social media, our own website, a newsletter, print, verbal, bringing it up at the board, it's just another way to get that information out. So we are going to launch a Facebook page, we're going to give it a try, and we're going to link it to Twitter. So when we post on Facebook, it will post on Twitter. And I actually, just so the board knows, wanted to see how it worked today. So I did launch one Twitter message regarding the cooling station today on Twitter and I put that out there.
Who, how is the, who's going to maintain the page?
Technically, I would be responsible for maintaining the page, Mr. Simoneon, but I am having a meeting tomorrow with all the department heads and the division heads. I want everyone to be aware of it. And then certain, all the department heads will have access to that page because I want them to be able to post information on it. I want DPW to be, Bill Coyle, DPW Director, to be able to go on and say, we've got a road project, you might want to avoid Milburgh Street. Or, you know, please note that we had to close down this street because of a sewer issue. So police and fire likewise can also post on it. And under the charter, they maintain and can have their own pages as well, but obviously they would be linked. So ultimately, it falls under the town manager, even by the charter, to be responsible for it, but there will be a number of us that will be monitoring it. We are limiting comments on it because it shouldn't be a forum for comments and dialogue. It's a way to get information out. So we are going to monitor it and we're not going to allow comments that are inappropriate. We're not going to allow comments that are disparaging or political or personal. You know, it can't turn into that kind of a social webpage. That's not the intent of government and government shouldn't be in that. So we are going to watch it carefully.
Oh, sorry. You might just want to check because I think if you link those two accounts, I think if you post something to Twitter, it will post to Facebook, but not the other way because Twitter has 140-character limit on its messages. So if you post a message, part of it may get chopped off. It just, you might want to look at that.
Through the chair, I did discover that today as I started to get very verbose about the cooling station and it wouldn't take, so I had to chop it. And I've also noticed on Code Red, well, I know on Code Red, when you send the text messages, we're limited to 100 characters. So it's hard to get it that small. So you're right, and it's my understanding that we have to link each, you'd have to link Facebook to Twitter and Twitter to Facebook. So I am learning it and I will make sure that, you know, it might be a little bit of a trial and error for us, but I think the important thing is it's just another venue. And I wanted the board to know, it did, you know, initially, the board, actually two years ago when I started, said it would be something that you should look into. And at that time, I wasn't quite sure if we had all the tools in place to do that, if we had, at that time, we were undergoing the reorganization, I wasn't sure if we had the leadership team in place yet. We weren't there yet to start doing this type of thing. I think now we're ready to do that and certainly, I trust every member of the leadership team to appropriately post on the website. We will have a policy that all the employees will have to abide by as well. We have an internet policy anyway and this is just another piece of that. And then we will be carefully watching this because we want this, again, we want this to be positive information for the community, maybe for businesses that are looking to locate here to see that it's a good place to live. You know, that we've got housing opportunities, we've got business opportunities. And we also want people in town to be aware of events coming up. There is an event section, so, you know, we want to be able to post on the event section. And I'm not going to say we're going to post every day, but we can also schedule posts. and I'm not going to say we're going to post every day, but we can also schedule posts to go so that we make sure we keep people up to date on it. And certainly I'd appreciate your feedback if you, you know, if it goes live tomorrow, which is our plan, once we told you about it tonight, I wanted to go live with it tomorrow, but certainly would look for the Board's feedback as to any ideas or recommendations or suggestions for how to improve it. Again, it's the first time we've done it, but we're not the first community that's done this. You know, I would say the majority of communities in Massachusetts have a Facebook page, so.
So I have...
Go ahead.
Thank you. I have a question regarding the, the criteria for removing posts where you have all department heads who will have access. Will you have a written policy or written criteria so that all department heads are consistent in, in removing a post?
Through the Chair, it is as specific as you can be, but there has to be some type of leeway to make decisions with respect to individual posts. So that language is in there as well. So yes, there is language in there that gives the criteria for which a post would be removed or a poster could be removed from permanently being able to go onto the site. We're also doing, there is a section in Facebook where you can limit the posts to it, so these are informational posts, there shouldn't need to be a lot of feedback, it's informational, it's, it's factual. Here's the cooling station, here are the hours, here's the electronic takeback program. You know, it's information like that, sign up for recreation today. So it, it's fairly limited anyway, it will have to be specific, the, any response would have to be specific to that post, but there has to be some type of flexibility for the administration to look at something and say, "That's really inappropriate." And at the end of the day, I would be able to make that decision along with the department head. I would say that we will take the criteria for posting in our guidelines for those who post and it will be put right on the Facebook page, under the About section, so people, other people will see what the criteria is.
Mrs. Simoneon, did you have another question?
Just in case you're not aware of it, I would strongly suggest, because I do this with my own page, no one can post anything unless I approve it. Because if you don't, anyone who likes the page can post information to it and that's where you can get in a situation where somebody starts using it for something we don't want, so.
No, through the Chair, you're correct and we, we are not, we did not set it up to have permissions to allow people to post photos or certain things, so I agree, we have to be careful because we, and I also included a statement in the policy that said if for any reason someone was able to post something that we did not authorize, you know, there wasn't, they found a way to do it, we have a statement in there just claiming that anything posted on there is not an endorsement by the Town of Auburn for that product, person, or business. So I, and I've asked Town Council to just give a quick overview to us of just nothing, nothing major, but just a quick review to make sure that we're within our legal rights when we do remove something in the future. You know, nothing we need to know today, but in the future, in case there are any issues, we want to make sure that the town's covered.
Last question, but some, someone will be monitoring it, right? Because given what I just said, unfortunately, their settings aren't perfect and I think, I've had things go through even when I didn't approve it, so.
Yeah, no, through the Chair, I, I would say that one of the reasons when the Board first brought this recommendation to my suggestion two years ago and at the time I said I would look at it, my number one concern was the amount of resources and time that it would take to put into this site, because you can't just put a page out there and just let it go. You've got to monitor it. And that was the other reason that I hesitated to get it done and until we were in a position to do it. And not that we have really the time to do it, it's, we're, we're very busy, but we're going to make the time to do it. And that is a concern. It's a very time-consuming process to have this done, so that's why the more controls we put on it, the less information that will be coming into the site, so it's cut down a little bit on the monitoring, but yeah, we will be, someone will be monitoring that site on a daily basis and looking for things that are inappropriate. And again, the intent is, we don't want to harm the town or the residents of the town or see anything negative, there are, people can do that outside of government if they so choose, I, I don't approve of it, but if they so choose, they may, but within government, we can't, we can't give a forum for that kind of dialogue if it's not related to the topic. So yeah, we're, we're going to do our best to monitor. And I would say down the road, Mr. Simoneon, if we find, you know, this is a trial, if we put it out there and we find it's not working and we can't keep up and things are too negative about it and it's not helping any of us, then we would consider removing the site altogether.
Hopefully it's not the case.
I hope we don't have to do that. It's been a lot of work just to get ready to go to this point, but I think at the end of the day, we have to make sure that we do what's right for the broader community and if, if removing a site that isn't, that is damaging needs to be done, that's what we'll do.
And did you have something on the cooling station?
Yes, I do. I just wanted to say that we opened a cooling center, again, at the Senior Center, this week from starting today through Friday. There are different hours and they're on the website, but if my recollection is right, today was until 4:00 PM, tomorrow until 9:00 PM, so Tuesday until 9:00 PM, Wednesday until 8:00 PM, Thursday until 4:00 PM, and Friday until 9:00 PM. And I want to, number one, thank the Senior Center and their staff for pulling together volunteers and the Council on Aging, because predominantly, the cooling station has been staffed by volunteers from the Council on Aging. And it's, it's important to have it. Someone asked me how many people are coming and, you know, it's hard, it's, as one of the Selectmen recently said, it's a hit or miss situation. One day you may have a lot of people and the next day you may have none. It's my understanding, we had five at the last time we opened it, one evening. The prior one, we actually had a woman come in with a toddler and an infant and they were suffering from the heat, didn't have an air conditioning unit and stayed for quite a few hours. We almost had a situation recently where we had a large residential complex that lost their generator power, so they weren't able to have air conditioning and we were in the process of arranging for busloads of people to be brought there while they got the system undergoing, thankfully, that didn't have to happen. So I guess I would say whether you need, you serve one person in a cooling center or you served 10 or you serve none, we need to do that as an emergency management plan for the residents of this town. We have to have it available to them if someone needs it. And if someone doesn't need it, that's wonderful, but if they need it, it should be there. So, you know, we're trying to, to keep the hours, especially on a weekend, you know, 12 to 5, because really those are the hours people would be looking for it. This weekend, so far, it doesn't look that the forecast will warrant that on Saturday and Sunday, but in the past two weekends, two times we did it, we did 12 to 5 because around the dinner hour, people are generally going home anyway. But we had other events going on at the Senior Center on the nights that were staying open, so it was a matter of getting people to fill in the interim time, the building would be open anyway, we should open it to the residents of Auburn, just to come and utilize that building.
Do you have anything else?
Uh, no, I think that's it.
Okay, thank you. We have no tabled items, is there any additional public comment? Mr. Natoli? No, I threw my pen.
Thanks, Board. Just a little, one little thing.
Can you move the microphone in a little?
What's that?
Can you just move that microphone in a little?
I'm sorry.
Thanks.
Okay. I, I thought there's a little confusion on the appointments on the third. I mean, there's actually only two that you appointed, there isn't a third, so if you're thinking of voting a third, there's only seven members, five are voting, two are alternates, so those are set. So there isn't actually a third. I mean, the only thing left to do is just the differentiate between the voters, voting members and the alternates. Second, I just want to say to the Board, one thing about, I'd like to present is, it's actually some information that I got from, from taking some courses from the Citizens Planning Training Collaboration, it's something really important. And I'd like the Board, if they can, I always stress for getting education. I think we're going to need some extra money to, to get education for the, at least four new members who haven't taken these courses. We usually have that budget, I don't know if it's in the budget, but I'm sure that amount of money could be found, it's usually $50 a course, they're given twice a year, really is, is a tremendous value to go. I'm sure Adam, who used to be with it, I've taken from his mentor, Bill Scanlon, many, a couple of courses, it's, it's really great, it's, it's incredible. I actually have something that I gave Mr. Kerwin at the last meeting and which he, he brought back to me and I, and it's something I'd like to, if you can get it copied, because he tried to go to Town Hall and get this copied, they wanted to charge him 20 cents a copy, unfortunately, he, he's a Board member, so I don't think he should be charged. So if that could be done, I'd like to present it to the Board, great information, he read it, he said it, it just gave him a veteran insight and it's something that you can give to the new members would really help them because, Ken, when you said that they, they can seek, you know, advice and, and it's basically, other than, than Council, it's an autonomous Board and they really got to be careful in what they get advice on that's not in public meeting or asking, just so that the, the integrity of the Board is not thinking they were influenced in any which way. That's why we really don't ask a lot of questions from other departments or anything like that, unless it's brought in, in, in an open meeting, you really got to be careful of what you do. And that's what, you know, I've always strived to do that. Again, very important education, absolutely important, and I have some things that they're welcome to have, I'd like to copy back because from my own files, it's been interesting. But I have something that, and it's a, it's not a big pamphlet, but it's even something I, I think the Board should read, because it's going to give you an insight, I think, more on, on what our Board's about. I think it's a Board that very, very few people know about until you've, you've actually sat on it, that you understand the limits that the Board has. And it's just one thing, because I, I read in the paper, you know, how lately about, say, not business friendly or something like that, and it kind of bothered me because I, I didn't think we were. And it's something I want to read about, about zoning and, and legislation. And because it says zoning legislation is not designed for the preservation of economic value of property, and that probably shocks people, because, oh, you can, in accept as far as that end is served by making the community a safe and healthy place to live. And that's really the key to most of our zoning bylaws and regulations. And it, it bothered me a little bit, say, if, when you, when you vote one way, someone's angry if you didn't vote their way or not, and so they'll complain and, but we always try to be fair. And the thing I always wanted to remember is that we are like a little, a little jury, so we, we are autonomous and we're very aware that what we do in, in giving, say, a variance, it goes against what the bylaw says, it means it goes against, we undermine every time you really give a variance, the legislature body of the town, which is really town meeting, because they said, "This is what we want." And when you give a variance, that basically, it kind of says, "Well, I know that's what you want, we're going to allow this." And maybe it can be done under certain circumstances, but there's such a limit on the way you can do it, that I think it's, hopefully someone is going to think, "I'm just going to go there and vote the way I want," because there is a limit and it's put on by statute by the state. Again, town meeting usually gets their zoning bylaws by a comprehensive plan that was done. So whenever you vary, you know, do anything from a variance, it goes against that, that whole effort of that planning. And we always tried to balance that, you know, we, we were as lenient as we can. So it's not so much the Board is not business friendly as much as some of the bylaws just don't fit what the businesses wanted to do. So it's something I, I would like to see the Board stay autonomous. I hope, hopefully they, they don't think that they have to vote one way or another. I don't want, I would hate to think, I don't think my job was put in jeopardy or not my job or my position, only because a commercial entity said I was maybe not friendly or leaning on their way. I tried to lean on what was fair and what, and again, I'm always conscious, because I'm a town meeting member, when I make a vote at town meeting, I do expect that that bylaw is what, what's, what should be there, it should be enforced or whatever. I mean, can I, we've, we've all been town meeting members quite a few, a long time. So with that, I'd like to present the Board with this, this little pamphlet and I think it's, it's going to help, I know it would help Mr. Kerwin again, if copies can be made at hopefully no cost to the Board, because they really, it's something that's going to help them along the way. And I think the Board, it'd be great reading for the Board, it's not long and I think you'll understand what we do have to go through and we do have to consider at every vote and it'll probably might, might help in, in later selections and things like that. So if I could present this to the Board?
Yes, and I just want to say, you know, now that the appointments have been made, you know, personally, I just want to thank you for your 17 years of service on the Zoning Board of Appeals. And you just mentioned, I was going to mention, your, your service as a town meeting member and I hope you'll continue that. And Wayne, I believe it's three years, three years on the Zoning Board of Appeals? Nine? Time flies, huh? Thank you for your nine years of service on the Zoning Board of Appeals. The managers just wanted to comment on Dennis's and then you can come up on the public comment.
I just want to follow up on Dennis's. I agree, we'll look into the budget, Dennis, for any Board and Commission members regardless of ZBA, Planning Board, you know, there are some great courses that are out there and I agree, I participated in some of them when I used to be a Planning Board member years ago and they're good. The other thing I want to mention is, because we recognize that there are a lot of regulations and rules and the Boards and Commissions need to be aware of it, we instituted a Board and Commission training, annual, annual training workshop that we hold here at Town Hall every fall for all the Board and Commission members, whether they're new or reappointments or existing members. And our Town Council runs it basically and the things that we talk about are the conflict of interest laws, the open meeting laws, Roberts Rules and AG's Office requirements with regard to or rules against fundraising and things like that. And it gives Board members who attend the opportunity to ask questions about Town Council, from Town Council and get responses, because I know it's hard to access Town Council individually. So we do offer that every fall, we've had two now, and we will offer it again this fall, and I highly encourage members of all the Boards and Commissions to attend, even if you're an existing member. It's important because the regulations change and the state does make changes and things that were in place a year ago may not be in place now or vice versa. So we, in addition to these types of outside things, we do offer training internally too. And if any of the Boards or Commissions have any questions at any point, if they can funnel them either through the Selectmen's Office or us, we can package all of them and get it to Town Council for response, so we get back to them in a timely manner. But again, that, that training would probably be coming up in October.
Okay. And once you have that date, if you could get that date out right away, people's calendars fill up so quickly.
Thank you.
If you could do that.
Thank you.
Do any members have anything? Mr. Grossman?
I'd like to thank Dennis and, and Wayne for their time served in giving so much to the town.
Dennis, Mr. Page?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I really don't know where to start here, but I'm very sorry you didn't see to appoint me and Dennis Natoli, for the reason is, we've been there for a long time and you just put two people on your appointment, you appointed, that have not even looked at a meeting, never mind go to a meeting, that has no training whatsoever. And, you know, it's not so bad that you get rid of me, I can handle that, I help people and that's what I'm continuing to do, whether you people keep throwing good people off the Boards, between the Board of Selectmen and especially the Town Manager, the way she has gotten rid of very good people from this town. We are not Worcester, we're not going to be Worcester. And, you know, it's, it's really sad to see all these great town people being taken off these committees. And Mr. Holstrom, you're one I never really expected, but tonight, you showed me your colors. And it's too bad, because we do have a good town. This is not just a business town, this is a resident town. And that's all this Board has been doing, is pushing businesses for the past four years as far as tax classification goes and anything else. It's terrible. And like I said, I'm not sorry for me, I'm sorry for that Board. I'm sorry that Dennis Natoli, as the Chairman of the Board, that has acknowledged that he has and you people vote, we have one Selectman that didn't even answer, ask one question. Not even one question. And you call yourselves a Board. It's terrible. What you are doing to the residents of this town and hopefully next year, we will be replacing two of the Board of Selectmen. Maybe we can get our town back, because obviously between a Town Manager and her puppets, the town will not be going forward until it happens and hopefully next year, we will take care of that. I'm sorry, I'm a little bit upset, but you did a disservice to your town, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Page. Is there any additional public comment? Mr. Simoneon?
If you recall, at our last meeting, I couldn't, I couldn't find a note I had written about a public comment, so I, just, there was, Mr. Ringard, I believe, had spoken in regard to the...
Winter by...
Winter, on the public comment. And, and the only comment that I had on, I, I understand the points that he made, but, you know, this, this kind of thing has happened in the past with, you know, other residents who after the fact had issues and concerns. And so I guess I would ask him, and I, again, wish I had had my notes, I know he had left by the time second public comment came anyway, but, you know, there were public hearings But, you know, there were public hearings and there were a lot of meetings of the alternative energy committee over the last four years since the initial grant was sought for the wind turbine. So I just, it seems, you know, four years in to start asking the town to spend additional money to put up balloons and do all these other things to demonstrate the impact of the wind turbine, I guess I'm just curious as to why he didn't attend those meetings up front and raise those concerns. And I'm not saying they're not, you know, they're not valid, it's just, seems a little late to ask that of the town at this point. So, anyway, that was it.
Thank you. Anything else? Do we, we don't have any minutes, do we? No minutes. Does anyone have anything else? All entourage motion.
Second?
All is in favor?
Aye.
All so voted, we're adjourned.